I'd like to call this meeting of Thursday, November 19th, 2020 to order. I have to read this long thing again. Okay. The Governor of the State of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak restricting individuals to gatherings of 10 persons or less, and all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In the light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the November 19th, 2020 Village Board and Committee of the Hall meetings is not practical or prudent in the light of the disaster. Of the trustees of the village board participating in the November 19th, 2020 Village Board meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. This was signed by me, Linda Jackson, village president of the village of Glendale Heights, on November 19th, 2020. So, that being said, would the clerk please take the role?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritado?
Excused.
Trustee Pojack?
Here.
And Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
Allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on our agenda is the public hearing. And this is a public hearing by the mayor and Board of Trustees for the purpose of discussing the annual tax levy assessment and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2020 and ending April 30th, 2021. So, I call the public hearing open. There's nothing from the public, Mike, on the public hearing?
Correct, there's nothing out of the public hearing from the public. I know that Director Polling has a presentation for you and the board.
Okay. Director Polling, are you there?
I think I'm here, Mayor. Hopefully, everyone can see me, okay?
We can see you.
I'm gonna share my screen.
Okay.
Now, everyone hopefully can see that.
Yes, sir.
And now I will share my thoughts.
Okay.
I wish to offer a brief refresher on the steps behind the tax levy process and give you a summary of the recommended tax levy for 2020. Annual tax levy ordinances have to be filed with the county clerk on or before the last Tuesday in December. Ext sterity is not my forte. I should have practiced more.
It's okay.
Can't get the next slide. There we go.
All right.
Taxing authorities all across DuPage County send their respective levy requests to the county clerk. Levies are expressed as a specific dollar amount. The county clerk sets the property tax rate based on the equalized assessed value of all property in the village as determined by the two township assessors. Tax bills are prepared by the county treasurer and go out near the end of April. Taxpayers pay bills in two installments, first in June and then September. Property tax payments are made to the county treasurer, who then distributes the village's share. In examining tax bills throughout the village, there are factors that cause the village's share from individual tax bills to be different in certain parts of the community. These differences are mainly related to school districts, fire districts, and townships. The tax rate shown here is for tax code 2041, which represents the largest tax value of the village's 2019 equalized assessed valuation. With so many taxing authorities, it can be confusing to understand who gets property tax money and how much to get. Oh, my goodness, bless you. This currency chart represents the breakdown in percentages of taxes retained by each taxing district. On average, and depending on where you live, 10.6% of the property tax burden comes from the village. As an example, for an average tax bill of $6,118, the village receives 10.6% of that, or $648, while the remaining portion goes to all the other taxing districts, with the schools getting the highest percentage. When we analyze the components on an average $6,118 property tax bill, we see what each separate taxing body receives. An important distinction within the village is that there is no park district taxing body. Instead, the village has its own recreation department. What this means to residents is that the $648 includes a levy for recreation. And because the village includes recreation as part of its overall tax levy, our comparison to other municipalities can appear higher. An advantage of having a recreation department as opposed to separate park district are the benefits of unified administrative and support services. To give you some perspective on the difference between park district taxes and the village's levy for recreation, you can see in this table that the village had the lowest amount levied in 2019 compared to surrounding communities that have separate park districts. Going back to our previous $648 property tax bill example, this table shows you the breakdown of what services the villages provide, what services the village provides with those tax dollars. If you converted the village's tax bill into a daily rate, the cost of village services would be $1.78 per day. In this chart, you can see how the equalized assessed values have fluctuated over the last decade. Beginning in 2016 is when we saw housing values rebound. The equalized assessed value has been on a steady climb for the last four years, but as you can see, it's still shy of 2010 levels. In the last nine years, from 2008 to 2016, the village essentially held the line when it came to the property tax levy, keeping a promise made by the mayor and the Board of Trustees to be fiscally responsible with public dollars. As a direct consequence of state actions in 2017, the village was forced to increase the property tax levy by 5%. With the village seeing strong and steady commercial development, staff tonight is able to recommend a 0% increase for the 2020 tax levy. This will be the third consecutive year in which the levy request has been for the same amount of property tax dollars. Should be noted, though, that property taxes are a small portion of the total funds required to provide village services. A courtesy notice was placed in the newspaper and published on November 12th in the form that you see on this slide. And that concludes my presentation. I thank you for your time. My contact information, both telephone number and email are here in case anyone has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Very well explained. Since we have no comments that came in from the public, I'm assuming Mike? Then motion would be in order to close the public hearing. Chester?
I'd like to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. We now go to our community announcements. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
While writing your holiday greetings to friends and family, please remember our military personnel who have or who are currently serving our country during the holidays. The village is collecting holiday greeting cards and will mail them in time for holiday delivery. Please drop off your holiday greetings cards to the village hall by December 3rd. Please do not put cards in envelopes, decorate cards with glitter, or add personal contact information like email or social media. For more information, please call 630-909-5327. The village of Glendale Heights invites the entire community to celebrate the start of the holiday season with the annual tree lighting ceremony on Monday, November 30th. The ceremony will begin at 7:00 PM. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and to allow for proper social distancing, the annual tree lighting ceremony will be held at Camera Park as we look to the sky for a little holiday cheer. For more information, please contact the mayor's office at 630-909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light?
All right, I was surprised. Okay. Street sweeping parking restrictions remain in effect for the month of November. Mayor Jackson and the village board have recognized that due to COVID-19, families may have multiple cars on their property. To ease the burden on residents and to facilitate maintaining clean roadways, Mayor Jackson and the village board are allowing residents to park on unpaved, paved or any paved or unpaved surface on designated street sweeping days. Additionally, residents are also allowed to park parallel to streets on the aprons of their driveways on designated street sweeping days only. Street sweeping helps remove leaves and debris from the streets that could cause flooding or make for unsafe driving conditions. Anyone walking on village streets, anyone parking, I'm sorry, anyone parking on village streets or on their designated street sweeping days will be issued a citation. To review your dedicated street sweeping parking restriction day, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org or note the posted signs on your street indicating which color zone you are in. For more information, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040. Join us Saturday, December 5th, from 10:00 AM to noon for coffee with the mayor and village board at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at 630-909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Trustee Pojack?
Oh. Okay, here we go. The village of Glendale Heights annual Christmas sharing program will be looking a little different this year due to COVID-19. The village will be working alongside the school districts to help identify families who have been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic through the school lunch assistance program. We appreciate everyone's understanding of the necessary changes to the Christmas sharing program due to COVID-19. The health and safety of our volunteers, families, staff, and everyone involved is the most utmost and the importance of the holidays and the difficulties families are facing and wish to continue to share in a spirit of the holidays. If you are interested in making a monetary donation to support the Christmas sharing program and give back to those in need, please contact Debbie Marino at dmorino@glandalehighs.org or call 630-260-6030, extension 6130. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroder?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
A breakfast from Santa. On Saturday, December 19th, Santa will be serving up a breakfast to go as we have a safe alternative to our annual Breakfast with Santa event as we host Breakfast from Santa. The Breakfast to Go event will be held at the Sports Hub. Be sure to bring your Christmas list to drop off to Santa. Please continue to visit the Sports Hub website for more information at www.ghbrf.com or call 630-260-6060. Then, we'd like to remind you that residents per the village code do not rake or move leaves or yard waste onto village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clear and clean of any debris for safe driving. Yard waste collections occur on the same day as regular waste and recycling pickup. The final collection day for yard waste is November 27th and the 28th. If you have any questions, please call Republic Service at 847-981-0091. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I have to call for another public hearing by the mayor and Board of Trustees on Thursday, December 10th, at 7:30 PM concerning the potential designation of the Army Trail Road Calvary Drive Tiff District. So, if you could all please mark your calendars, that will be before the board meeting on December 10th. Next, I have another proclamation, which I'm gonna read. This is for two of our residents. This is a proclamation congratulating Lee and Mary Ann Walper on their 60th wedding anniversary. Whereas Lee and Mary Ann Walper were joined together in marriage on November 5th, 1960, and whereas Lee and Mary Ann Walper were blessed with two daughters and a son to complete their family, and whereas Mary Ann Walper learned about the village of Glendale Heights through Catherine Randdecker while they were members of a popular garden club. The Walpers moved to Glendale Heights in 1976. And whereas Lee Walper is retired as a ground serviceman from American Airlines, a job which gave the Walper family the opportunity to travel throughout the United States and create breathtaking memories. Lee Walper also worked part-time for H&R Block for 25 years. Mary Ann Walper worked as a key punch operator and then went into accounting. And whereas volunteering and giving back to the community is second nature to both Lee and Mary Ann Walper, they both gave their time and talent through many years of leading Cub Scouts. Mary Ann was a Cub Scout troop leader and Lee was a Boy Scout leader that helped his son become an Eagle Scout, just like his dad. And whereas Lee Walper has played an important role in our community, he was a school crossing guard from September 2005 through August 2019 and assisted children with safely crossing the street to and from school. He has also been a very familiar face at Christmas time and has been joyously listening to what children want for Christmas for over 30 years. And Mrs. Walper plus joined him in the past 10 years. And whereas Lee and Mary Ann have been members of the Center for Senior Citizens since it opened in 2010, Mary Ann has participated in craft classes in the annual craft fair. And whereas both Lee and Mary Ann are also very involved in the St. Matthew Church community, Lee Walper is with the Knights of Columbus, St. Matthew Council 9893, and Mary Ann is with the CCW Catholic Council of Women. And whereas it is proper to acknowledge the sanctity of this marriage union between Lee and Mary Ann Walper on their 60th wedding anniversary on November 5th, 2020. And whereas it is also proper to congratulate Lee and Mary Ann as proud grandparents of two grandchildren and great-grandparents of three great-grandchildren. Now, therefore, I, Linda Jackson, president of the village of Glendale Heights, do hereby proclaim November 5th, 2020 as Lee and Mary Ann Walper's 60th wedding anniversary. I further declare this a day of celebration and joy for the loving couple, their family, and friends. Congratulations, Lee and Mary Ann Walper. So, if there are no objections, I will sign the proclamation? No objection? Oh. Okay, thank you. Um. Next, we have public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public. Mike, do we have anybody?
Sorry, no, we have not received any emails for public discussion on agenda items.
Okay, being none, we will move on to the consent agenda. What is your pleasure? Trustee? Yes?
Linda, can I ask a question? On that December 10th, is that a 6 o'clock public hearing for Army Trail and Calvary? Was that the time?
No, I think 7:30, Chester. Is that right? Yeah, 7:30, Chester. Yeah.
That's 7:30, okay.
It's right at the beginning of the board meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Because I thought when we had our original public hearing, we were gonna have it at 6 o'clock for the residents.
No, I think the plant commission has
That's correct. There's a public hearing for the plant commission on December 8th. That went out in a separate public hearing notification. I believe that went out today.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that.
Right.
That's for the Army Trail and Calvary?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our public hearing is at the board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It'll be a busy week.
Get the consent agenda before you. Trustee Sullivan?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
And Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Want to say, old business, there is none. So, we go on to new business. Number one, a motion to waive first reading on new business items 2 and 3. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on new business items 2 and 3. Number two is an ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-2. First reading was waived, so this would be ordinance number 2020-65. Trustee Sullivan?
I'm moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
And Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-65 is approved. Number three, an ordinance rejecting all bids for water pollution control facility rehabilitation project for the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading's been waived. This would be ordinance number 2020-66. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Discussion. I believe we have a presentation?
We do, Mayor. Chris Marschenke from Trotter and Associates is on board to give us a short presentation on the status of this project and why that we are asking the board to reject all bids. So, I will turn this over to Chris and Director Kaplan from Public Works.
Great. Welcome, Chris and Rachel.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Yep. Right. I'm going to share my screen and jump right into it. Okay, it should be showing now. Good evening, President Jackson and trustees. My name is Chris Marschenke. I'm with Trotter and Associates Engineering. You may remember that I gave a presentation regarding the village's phosphorus removal efforts at the wastewater plant several months ago. The short presentation is in regards to the same topic, so some of it might look a little familiar. In general, I'm going to briefly discuss the project background, review the bids that were received, and eventually discuss our next recommendations moving forward. So, just to recap from that previous presentation, the projects we're talking about tonight stem from the Illinois EPA's phosphorus removal requirement that's in the village's current wastewater discharge permit. That requirement is referred to as Special Condition 18 and specifically requires that the village meet an effluent limit of 1 milligram per liter or 1 part per million of phosphorus. Through two studies in 2017 and 2018, a number of alternatives to meet that standard were reviewed and ultimately, a two-phase approach to compliance was recommended. Those two phases are effectively two separate capital projects, both necessary to meet the EPA standard. Phase one is a rehabilitation of the sludge digestion process, which includes rehabilitating the village's existing online digester and bringing a second currently unused digester back into service. Phase two are the actual upgrades to the biological process to physically remove that phosphorus. And I should note that both of these phase one and phase two capital upgrades anticipated to be funded through the Illinois EPA's low-interest loan program, which we'll touch on a couple slides down here. So, really, we're focusing on phase one tonight, the digester rehabilitation. That was designed and permitted over the last 24 months or so, and bids were opened at the end of October. The engineers estimate, which effectively is the authorized loan amount from the state, was approximately 6.1 million. We only received two bids, both right around 8.5 million. The EPA does allow awarding of contracts with only two bidders, two bids being received. But obviously, due to the variation in the estimate in the bids, we needed to dig into that and see where those discrepancies were. So, we performed a bid analysis with the low bidder, there's subcontractors as well, to determine where those variations were. And the main factors that we found across all trades were that, number one, labor for work in the existing online digester work in the existing online digester, which is considered a confined space, was significantly higher than anticipated. And the second main aspect identified is that several environmental factors have increased material prices appreciably over the last twelve months or so. The I E P A loans require materials used to meet what they call American iron and steel standards, essentially by American requirements. And currently domestic material prices are, as I mentioned, higher than about twelve months ago. That's in part due to current trade policies as well as, uh, supply chain disruptions from COVID and other natural disasters on the coasts. Yo, hang on, I'm gonna go back for one second here. Apologies. Uh, a couple other factors that came up during the bid review that the size and scope of the project may have led to less bidders overall in that once we get up to that eight, nine, ten million dollar range, uh, that's over where a lot of the smaller contractors are able or willing to bid. And the second item that came up was that some of the more village-specific administrative requirements may have also impacted the number of bids that we received. So now getting into our recommendation based on those bid receives and bid received and the analysis that we've performed, uh, the first would be the rejection of those bids, and that's what's before the board tonight. Um, rejecting those bids because they're outside of the authorized loan amount and may not have been indicative of as competitive of a bidding environment as we'd like to see. We would then modify the scope delineation between phase one and phase two that was identified in that two thousand eighteen facility plan. That would mean shifting roughly a third of the scope from phase one into phase two. From a practical standpoint, um, that means delaying the rehabilitation of the existing online digester and rebidding the remaining portion of the work. Phase two, the phosphorus upgrades, would then incorporate the rehabilitation of that existing online digester several years down the road. After updating the bidding documents to reflect that shift in scope, we would rebid the revised phase one work with a target project cost of approximately five point five million. In order to maintain the I E P A loan that we currently have authorized, we would advertise that revised work for bid in December and open those bids in February. Construction would then begin in April or May with an approximate twelve-month duration. So the revised overall timeline, phase one and phase two would be as outlined on this slide. As I mentioned, phase one construction would be completed in two thousand twenty-two. Design of the phase two scope is currently underway with an estimated bid in the summer of two thousand twenty-two and construction completing in about mid-two thousand twenty-four. That allows the village to begin the actual process optimization of the biological process, basically growing the biological organisms necessary to remove phosphorus over the following year in time to meet the I E P A requirements. This final slide was prepared by Director Polling to reflect the recommended modifications in the village's debt service schedule. And the schedule reflects the three general obligation bonds being paid in full over the period shown, as well as the two new I E P A loans taking effect. And I should note that obviously further discussions will be had with the board over the next several years regarding that second I E P A loan. We're talking about repayments that wouldn't begin on that one until fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, so that would be a process moving forward. And that, I believe, is all I have for this evening, so I'm going to end my screen share and then turn it back over either to the board for questions or staff if there's anything else you would like to add.
Does any board member have any questions? Trustee Pojack?
Yeah, Chris, when will be the completion date on this?
So the first phase, uh, if it's bid in December and awarded in February, construction will probably be done in, in about May of two thousand twenty-two. Phase two picks up right after that one is completed with a bid in probably July of two thousand twenty-two. And construction of that phase would be completed in, again, mid-two thousand twenty-four, something in that range.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Anybody else have questions?
Trustee.
Trustee Schmidt?
Chris, uh, are there any penalties from the I E P A for delaying the project?
No, that's a good question. There are not, uh, and that's kind of what's driving the timeline for rebidding this advertising in December is that, uh, currently we are basically guaranteed that funding from the state. But come January one, any projects that haven't been bid, uh, that money is considered to be back in the pool that the EPA has to work with, and they can authorize other projects to move forward in lieu with it. So that's kind of the driver for that, uh, target of a December advertisement for bids.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions from staff? Okay, thank you very much, Chris. And I believe we have a motion in a second to reject all the bids. So this would be roll call vote. Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
And trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty dash sixty-six is approved. Number four is an ordinance providing for the levy assessment and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. For the village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, this is first reading. Number five is an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. In and for the village of Glendale Heights, Special Service Area One, which is Glendale Lakes Business Park, first reading. Number six, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. In and for the village of Glendale Heights, Special Service Area Number Two, which is Glendale Industrial Park, this is first reading. Number seven, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. In and for the village of Glendale Heights, Special Service Area Number Three, High Grove East Industrial Park, first reading. Number eight, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. In and for the village of Glendale Heights, Special Service Area Number Four, High Grove West Industrial Park, first reading. Number nine, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. In and for the village of Glendale Heights, Special Service Area Number Five, Glen Point Business Park, and this is first reading. Number ten, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. In and for the village of Glendale Heights, Special Service Area Number Six, Polo Club Heights Industrial Park, first reading. Number eleven, an ord- an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. In and for the village of Glendale Heights, Special Service Area Number Seven, Saco Industrial Park, first reading. Number twelve, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. In and for the village of Glendale Heights, Special Service Area Number Eight, which is Glendale Heights Business Park, first reading. Number thirteen, an ordinance of the village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, partial abatement of the two thousand twenty tax levy for twenty-four million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, general obligation bond series two thousand nineteen. That is also first reading. And that is all of our new business. So we are now back to public discussion of agenda items. Anything from the public, Mike?
Uh, no, Mayor, uh, nothing in the email from the public regarding agenda items. Uh, Nicole, is there anyone in the, uh, Zoom session?
Okay, thank you. Since there is no public discussion, um, a motion would be in order to adjourn. Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned, and Mike, I believe you have committee of the whole.
Yes, I do. All right. I, I'd like to call to order the meeting of committee of the whole for Thursday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Uh, Ms. Clerk, can you please note whose presence?
As noted.
Um, do we have any additions? Anybody?
If, if I may, uh, trustee Light, I have two additions. Um, this, one would be for the, uh, GFOA webinar, uh, which is just an announcement, and the other would be for the meter replacement project, shut offs for non-compliance.
And shut. Okay. Um. Public comments? Any, um, public comment? Mike?
Uh, we have, we received, uh, one email today, however, after, uh, two requests to ask the sender to identify themselves with a name, I have not received a response yet, uh, and so the questions will be, uh, answered offline.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? Any additions, uh, comment? No? All right, then we go on to, um, actually no committee recommendations, uh, discussion regarding electric aggregation. I guess that's you, Mike?
Uh, it is, uh, and I brought, uh, Dave Hoover today from NYMEC is here, uh, to discuss a new program for electric aggregation. You may recall several years ago, uh, we did some, uh, electric aggregation for our residents, uh, in order to try and save money for our residents on their electric bills. Um, those rates came down, uh, so that comm ed rates were, were just as competitive. Uh, but now there's a new program, um, that Dave brought to us, and, uh, we thought it important for the board to understand and hear what that was. So Dave Hoover? Dave, you are still muted. How you making? I heard you there.
Okay, all right. That must be my headphones, so I'll take those off. Anyway, um, thank you, uh, again, good to see many of you. I think I last saw in two thousand thirteen when we, uh, did the original aggregation program. Um, we have a, uh, new revision to that program that I think, uh, you will find interesting. Uh, and if I can, I'm going to just, uh, share the screen here and bring up a presentation. Um, we'll do this quickly. But the proposal tonight is, uh, is to restart the aggregation program uh, with, uh, uh, up to a hundred percent renewable energy. We can do various versions of that. Uh, when you did the program, um, six years ago, um, for two years, it was a hundred percent renewable, um, and we can match that. Um, and then in addition to that, uh, we can, uh, our suppliers will make a civic contribution to the, to the village. That's all good news. Uh, there are no savings, however, to residents. Um, so our program matches the comm ed rate that they're paying currently. Uh, the comm ed rate fluctuates within certain parameters, it fluctuates every month, and our program mirrors that. So, um, unfortunately for the residents, there are no savings available. Um, but we will be able to, at, at the existing rate, uh, bring in, uh, up to, uh, renewable energy and a civic contribution, uh, to the community. So you may say, quickly, you may say, you know, how can we do that? If comm ed can only, uh, you know, do the program, you know, without those, uh, how can we do it? So the first thing you need to know that with the data available at Commonwealth Edison, um, from a, each individual residence has its own cost to serve that, uh, that, uh, account. So from a supplier looking to price out, um, ten, ten accounts, uh, there'll be ten different, uh, prices. Uh, one price for each, can, each resident based upon their load profile. So bear with me here, just, uh, let's say we had a community of ten residents here. Um, and you can see that, uh, you know, this is the first resident is the most, you know, uh, efficient, and let's just say that they, their cost was seven point four cents to serve from a supplier's, uh, perspective. Um, the next one is seven, five, seven, six, all the way going up to eight point three cents. Um, if, uh, with the comm ed rate right there in the middle on the green dotted line going across the page. So from a supplier, if a supplier chose to serve the first resident alone, and that residence's cost was seven point four cents, and we serve them at the comm ed rate, which hypothetically in this illustration, seven point eight cents, you can see that the, uh, the supplier would be able to make a little bit less than a half a cent per kilowatt hour to serve that resident. Okay? Uh, so we have, so for those folks under the cost of the comm ed rate, uh, here in this illustration in the green, you can see that a supplier would make revenue serving those residents. And you may say to me, well, Dave, that's great, except that you're gonna give that back, the supplier's gonna give that back by serving those whose cost to serve is higher than the comm ed rate. So the main distinction between our old program and this program is that we, we split the community into two groups. And for the sake of tonight's discussion, we'll call them the green group and the red group. The green group, we would move to our supplier, and the supplier would be able to serve those at a rate lower, excuse me, they would be able, everybody's, both groups, excuse me, will be served at the comm ed rate. The supplier would be able to make revenue, profit on the group in the green. And the group in the red, we will leave those residents at Commonwealth Edison. They will be comm ed, we'll have to serve them at the comm ed rate. Now, just wanna be clear about this. If you have two residents living next door to each other, they go and get their mail, and they, you know, both open up their comm ed bill, one's in the green group, one's in the red group, they don't have any distinction. They don't know that because they're both gonna be billed by comm ed, and they're both gonna be charged at the comm ed rate. So there's no distinction, it doesn't matter to each resident which group they're in. They won't know that there's two groups. Um, it's, it's transparent to the residents. Uh, again, they continue to be billed at the rate that they're being billed at. But by serving the group, the green group, the supplier is able to, um, come up with excess funds, and they can use those funds to buy the green energy and, uh, have money left over to make a payment, uh, an annual civic payment to the community. One point I wanna make in- One point I want to make in that is that if you move forward this program, uh, the supplier will buy green energy for both the green group and the red group. So the program we say is can be up to 100% renewable, uh, that's for everybody in town. Uh, that's not just for the green group. Okay? Um, the, these are some of the communities that have, uh, um, you know, enacted this program. Um, you know, some nearby, you'll see, or, you know, um, Elmhurst is nearby. Uh, Glen Ellen, uh, I'm not sure they're on this list, but they've, uh, they've adopted this program. Um, and so we've been doing about 50 renewals over the last year and about 48 of the 50 have been in this program. So this is the way the industry is headed. And communities like yourselves who had their programs suspended are now coming back uh, to this, uh, to this program and restarting their programs. From a resident's point of view, uh, this is a typical ComEd bill. Um, for those people in the green group, this is what their bill looks like. And the only difference between, you know, the bill for those in the green group and those in the red group is next to the word supply here, it'll just say the name of the supplier that is serving the account. That's it. That's the only difference that, uh, that anyone, so again, I would say that 99.5% of your residents won't notice any difference once this program starts rolling in. This is sanctioned by the EPA and they have something called a EPA Green Power Partner Program. Uh, you'll be listed on their website and they'll give you two signs, uh, to be able to, uh, you know, advertise, let the community know that you're contributing to a, you know, a favorable, uh, environment. If you want to know, uh, a little bit about how the green power works, uh, you know, um, we can't control the electrons from a wind farm into Glendale Heights. And so there's a, there's a, um, they put together a program called the Renewable Energy Certificates. Um, and this, uh, there's a little four-minute video here if you're interested in it. Um, the, uh, the EPA has put out this video. It's pretty self-explanatory. It just kind of tells you how, uh, how that program works. So now we, I'm going to shift to the pricing, but before I get to your individual pricing, are there questions just about how this operates?
Anybody questions? No.
Okay, so if I can, give me one second. I'll figure out how to share my screen here and get back to the, let me just. All right, tell me if you can see this chart with a little green banner coming across the page.
Yes.
Okay. So what we did is we have, we only have two suppliers that are currently offering this program. We're trying to bring more suppliers into it. We only have two suppliers that, you know, have figured out, you know, the secret sauce about how to enact this program. One is, and both of them are here in Chicago and they're smaller firms. Um, obviously approved by the ICC to, uh, provide power. One is company called Elgo Energy and the other is MC Squared. And what you'll see here is, um, this is the pricing, the, the dollars that you see are the annual civic contribution payments that they would make to the municipality. And they vary based upon how much green power you would, uh, you would, you know, elect to take. So let me just start here at the first line here. If you, if you say, you know, we're not interested in green power, we just want to make our budget shot, we just want to maximize the payments to the municipality. Um, Elgo would send you a payment annually of just short of $114,000 a year, uh, which is a little bit more favorable than MC Squared's $100,000 a year. If you say, well, we're interested and we'd like to go 50% green, um, so 50% of our load, if everybody's load, we'll 50%, we'll supplement that with green, green energy. Uh, they would do a program with $104,000 they'd send you a year, um, which is much more favorable than MC Squared's. And if you say to us, hey, no, 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 we really like, uh, we want to be green and we want to continue the, you know, the green, 100% green power, uh, Elgo would send a payment just short of $100,000 a year to the municipality. Again, much more favorable than MC Squared's, uh, program. So, um, the, the funds, uh, the payments, uh, are contracted uh, and they are not limited to any particular usage. When we, if, if green energy is important to you, you could designate the funds to be used for renewable, uh, sustainable projects in town. You know, improving parks, maybe making bike paths or improving bike paths. Or I've seen, you know, recharging stations, uh, at bus stops. People can charge the phone while waiting for the bus. There's a number of things, you know, charging stations at train stations, uh, for electric vehicles. Um, any number of things you could designate it for. I'll just say on the other hand, if your budget is stressed, uh, due to COVID, uh, you, you can apply those funds, you know, to your general budget. Um, and finally, you might, um, just as times change, you may just, uh, say annually, you just may say annually, this year we're going to designate the funds to X. And, you know, might be the, you know, might be the, the budget to make up for the shortfalls due to COVID for the next 12 months. And then a year from now, you could say, you know what, this year we're going to, you know, you bring it before the, you know, community. And this year you could say, uh, we're going to designate those funds for, um, you know, for sustainable renewable projects or park improvements or things like that. So that's up to you, um, however you, uh, would like to use and designate those funds. Um, these are indications. Um, if you choose to move forward, um, we would refresh those prices for you. They're not going to change much, but we would refresh the prices for you, you know, a week before a, a board meeting when you would officially adopt the program. So again, I'll stop. I've done enough share, talking here, so, um, and I'll ask what questions you might have.
Dave, I got one question for you. Um, is this an opt-in or opt-out program for the residents? Or is there, uh, something they can make a choice with?
Yeah, uh, fair question. Um, uh, this, it, this will be conducted exactly like the original aggregation program, which is an opt-out program. Um, so let me just, let me just speak to that just briefly. Um, first of all, just say if anybody in town has made their own election and is currently being served by another power supplier, which is about 10% of your town, probably. Um, we set those aside and we don't touch those folks. We send them a letter and say, if you want to opt into this program, that's fine, but, but they are excluded from the program. The, uh, anybody who is at ComEd, um, would receive two letters actually, um, explaining the program to them and confirming their election. If they do nothing, they will be enrolled into the program. Um, if they do not opt out, again, they'll be in the program. But if they say one day after the program starts and they say, oh, wait a minute, I missed that, I want to opt out. They can opt out at any time, any reason, and there will be no charges to opt out of the program. Uh, there's no early termination.
Um, another question I had too, quick, um, why is it more expensive for green energy? I mean, uh, 0%, the village would be receiving more money. Uh, why is it, uh, the dollar amount between going 100% green and zero?
So if you go back to my illustration, um, where the supplier serves those residents in the green group, they're going to come up with, uh, excuse me, they're going to come up with a pot of money, okay? But once they get paid for their services, um, based on the size and magnitude of Glendale Heights, they're going to come up with X, $113,000 in, in this pot of money to share back to the community. If you say we want to be 100% renewable, then they have to go out and purchase that renewable energy. That renewable energy is at a premium vis a vis standard energy. And you can see here that that number is about $16,000 a year for them to go out and buy green energy uh, for the entire community. So they, from that pot, they take that and they buy that, uh, green energy, they pay for that. And then they have $98,000 left over, which they'll, uh, send back to the community.
All right, so it's costing more to buy the green energy then?
Yeah, green energy is more expensive. That's correct. If, if it were less expensive, ComEd would supply everybody 100% renewable energy, yeah.
Yeah, no kidding. Uh, anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, Mike, I do.
Bill?
Yeah, I see here you've got a rating of the ICC customer service rating. A three-star versus five-star. What is that based on and how are the ratings calculated?
Yeah, great. Um, this is a rating system of the ICC. And it is based on the number of complaints that they have for a thousand, uh, residents that, uh, these suppliers serve. Uh, the rating goes one to five. Uh, three is fine. Um, MC squared is just a much, you know, they just knock it out of the park. Um, but, uh, but there's a cost to that. Um, do we think that it's worth the difference to you to go with MC squared? We would not recommend that. Um, we've done probably 20, 15 to 20 programs with Elgo. And, uh, if we didn't feel comfortable with them, we wouldn't present them. Um, but they, but I, all I can say, I just, full disclosure, uh, MC squared has a little bit superior customer service when interacting with your residents who may call in with questions.
So i- i- excuse me, Dave, um, what type of questions would a resident have in this situation, since this is just a supplier?
Yes, so, uh, the way the program is rolled out like it was seven years ago, um, on the village letterhead, at the supplier's expense will be a letter to the residents um, explaining that the village is implementing and, you know, is restarting their aggregation program. And, um, and their account will be moved, uh, or will be impacted. There'll be 100% green energy or 50% or whatever percent you choose. Um, they'll give you the terms of it. Uh, and they'll say, if you want to opt out, you know, here's how you opt out. If not, you'll be included. When people get that, there is a certain number of people who are confused. Or maybe they get two sentences into it and say, I don't know what this is, I'm going to call. And we have an 800 number at the bottom. Um, we don't publish the village's number. Uh, we publish the supplier's, uh, call center. And, uh, so, uh, every time we roll one of these out, uh, there's just a number of people who call the 800 number and say, wh- what is this? Is this a scam? You know, is this really what, you know, and the village will get some calls, you'll get some calls as well. Um, because it'll be on the village's letterhead. So, yeah, they're just inquiries. Most of them are, are confused, most of them. Yeah.
So once, once the program is rolled out, there would be no reason for our residents to interact with the, with the electrical supplier?
That's correct. Um, yeah, so this all takes place, um, this all takes place over about three week period of time. And then, uh, and then after about three weeks, it'll drop off and it'll become, uh, invisible. So, you know, the only folks who, if somebody new moves into town, things like that. But, uh, we, the history in all these is, uh, the residents actually received two different letters uh, over a span of about three weeks. Uh, one is from the village, the other is from Commonwealth Edison. Uh, it just confirms that they're, that they're moving their account. Um, yeah, and there's just some confusion with all of those. Uh, they don't understand it or they're not paying attention. Uh, they missed the first letter and then they get the second letter. Um, yeah, there's just a number of calls, but it happens in the first three weeks and then you don't hear from them. If you do a three-year program, you can do a one, two, or a three-year program. If you hypothetically do a three-year program and for two years and 11 months, nobody will hear anything.
Chester, you had a question?
Yeah, uh, Bob, how many different suppliers are in the village regarding this? Is there more than one, two, three?
Um, your question is how many suppliers, uh, do we work with in this program?
Right.
Uh, we only have two.
Just, uh, Elgo and, um, MC squared?
Yeah, unfortunately that, you, you are correct, just those two. We have tried hard to bring some of the other suppliers that we work with into this program. And, uh, you know, w- we think, you know, there's others that may be, you know, working on, trying to figure it out. But these two are a little bit smaller. We call them boutique firms. You know, they work harder, you know, they got to be a little bit smarter than the big beginners and, uh, and they are, in this particular case.
How long have they, you've been using these two suppliers? Are they relatively new or something?
Uh, MC squared, we've worked with for about eight years, uh, very highly regarded. And Elgo, we started working with them, uh, probably about, we've, we started, we knew who, we've been introduced to them and aware of them about four years ago. And we started working with them on this program about a year and a half ago.
Any serious problems with either one?
Um, I, I would say, uh, you know, there's always speed bumps here and there and there's perception issues. Um, but I would say both are fine. Again, if we didn't feel comfortable, um, you know, just to be clear, we're a consultant, uh, who, you know, working on your behalf. And if the program blows up, for whatever reason, you're not going to be happy with me. And so, um, so if we have them here on the list, we feel confident that they can do a, a fine job for you.
If some residents have the ComEd right now, would it be advised for them to change the switch or just stay where they're at?
So if they're at Commonwealth Edison, um, they will be automatically included in the program.
Oh, automatically?
They will be automatic. That's an opt-out program. So, uh, they will get a letter, they will explain to them, uh, the program and they'll say to them that they can opt out and here's how you opt out. This letter will say, if you don't opt out, you will be moved. Um, well, again, the group in green will be moved to, let's say, Elgo. And the group in red will just be informed, they'll stay at ComEd. So half the group will just stay at ComEd anyway. The other half of the group will move to Elgo, but it doesn't matter because they're going to be priced at the ComEd rate. They'll be served by, they'll, they'll be billed by ComEd. If they have an outage, they call ComEd. They, I mean, it's a big yawn for the residents because there's zero impact.
All right, very good. Okay.
Receiving, other than receiving these letters, there's no impact on them. And so,
All right.
But if they, you know, there's always people who don't trust, you know, anybody that like ComEd, they want to stay at ComEd. And if they want to opt out of the program, they can opt out. It's, it's no problem at all.
There's no penalty?
No, no penalty, no charges. Um, all they have, there's an 800 number, there's an email. All they have to do is just say, hey, uh, just leave me where I'm at. Don't make any changes. Okay, fine, no problem.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Uh, Trustee Light, if I could just ask Dave just a couple more questions, if you don't mind?
Please do.
Um, so, Dave, I'm sorry if you covered this and I missed it. What happens if the ComEd rate drops after we sign, um, with Elgo, let's say?
We, we'll match the rate every month.
So the, the residents will always pay what the ComEd rate is?
Every single month with all the adjustments. It does change, it does change every month. It does change. ComEd sets their rates annually. Uh, and then there's a monthly adjustment to them every single month. We mimic those every single month.
Okay, uh, thank you. And the other, uh, question I had was just, uh, to clarify that, um, once, if the power goes out, the resident still calls ComEd. Nothing changes in that regard.
Nothing changes. And, and just to be clear, even if they move to, to Elgo or NC squared, if they do, their power comes from these, uh, but they still are a customer of ComEd. They're still paying ComEd a monthly fee for the delivery. And, um, so there is absolutely no change to the service levels.
And ComEd really doesn't, isn't the supplier of the energy now, correct? They're just the deliverer.
That's correct. And even if you are at ComEd, even if you, if you're currently in ComEd and if you pay them, you know, $50 a month for your energy and you know, fifty dollars a month for your energy and hypothetically forty dollars a month for your delivery, they don't keep any of the fifty dollars right now. That fifty dollars comes in the front door and goes out the back door, you know, it's just a transfer. They keep the forty dollars. And if you move to any other supplier in our program, they'll be billed forty dollars and they'll keep the forty dollars. We've had private conversations with ComEd, we meet with them. They say, we wish everybody would go to this program. It's actually easier for ComEd. I can't say that publicly and I won't, I won't, you can't quote me on that, you know, in the press. I'm just saying they're very supportive of this program.
Thank you, Dave.
Do we have any other questions?
If if I might, if I might just interject, if you're interested in moving forward with this program, what we would do is there, we would need a formal board action at at whatever, you know, your next meeting or whenever you choose that you want to move into that, we'll refresh the pricing, so you'll have that before your meeting. It should be very similar to this. And then we have a power supply agreement that, you know, Mr. Strina would review. It's similar to the one we did last time, but we would get that to him in advance so he can look it over. And then we would move forward after that.
Alright.
And could I also point out that when we, when when Dave checked these numbers, he also did a standard aggregation that with the attempt to try and save residents individually money as well. And that came back with just the ComEd rate, we couldn't save residents money on a standard aggregation, correct, Dave?
Yeah, thank you. I I apologize. And if, just the current ComEd rate, if you see right here above the green banner, is six point nine cents. That's kind of the target benchmark. And if you look down here, we receive prices, they were all into the mid-sevens. So thank you, Mike, for just confirming that. We always check first to see if we can save, you know, that's the first option. Is to see if we can save anybody actual dollars like we did before. Just the way the market is now, we can't. And so this program is is the only program that we're able to offer you at this time.
Alright. Does anybody have any desires, questions, anything? Mayor, how about you?
I think it's a win-win for us. As long as we've been told that we will not, our residents will not pay any more than the ComEd rate. And that's probably the best guarantee we have. And in the meantime, we're going toward green energy and we're also able to collect some funds to do projects in our parks or even trees on parkways, just anything we would like to do that would benefit the residents. So I think it's a good opportunity for us.
So what are we looking for? A motion to move it to the board or directive, Mike?
I'm gonna ask Don what we need to make sure that we can move forward.
I think the standard motion we use at these COWs, a motion to move it to the board with a recommendation to concur. And as David said, we, you know, we've done these agreements with him in the past and with, as you've noticed, by other communities that we've, I've specifically done business with. So we're very familiar with this contract. So I think that's enough. Just move it to the board with a recommendation, concur, and we'll have it ready for December twelfth?
Tenth.
Tenth, excuse me.
Would anyone like to make that motion? Chester?
Move it to the board with a recommendation.
Okay, obviously discussion. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Alright, so we'll move that to the board with a recommendation to concur. Thank you very much, David.
Very good. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Alright, great, thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
No problem. Onto the other stuff. Mike, this is you, the GFOA and the shut-offs.
Yes, so I am going to take that from you, sir, and take that directly to the Director of Finance, Bill Polling.
Okay.
Who is all set to make a, some comments on those two topics.
Oh, I love Bill, okay.
Because you knew that if I started the board meeting, that I would have to end the board meeting. Exactly. Hogging the whole discussion, I'm sorry about that. I just want to make mention, the Government Finance Officers Association has a free webinar, free Tuesday, December first. This is for elected officials. And they're gonna discuss the fundamentals of public finance. Who wouldn't want to know about public finance? Webinar is gonna cover things like financial statements, fund balances, revenue forecasting, regulatory agencies, and basic budgets, basic budgets. So the webinar is from noon, one fifteen, so it's an hour and fifteen minutes. And again, it's on December first. If there are no objections, I will send the webinar invitation link to the elected officials.
Well, please do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, I will do that. Administrator, Mayor, and may I go on to the other one?
Of course.
Please do.
Please.
It's one that will take a little bit longer, I'm sorry about that. I want to let you know that Water Resources is nearing the completion of the village-wide water meter replacement project. We met with them on November second. We have monthly progress meetings with them. They reported that they have completed seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine meter replacements. That's about eighty-seven percent of their work completed. This past Tuesday, they told us that they have a hundred and ninety-seven accounts that have not yet made an appointment. And this is because, this is not because, this is after these hundred and ninety-seven people have received five separate notifications, including letters from Water Resources and phone calls. Of the one hundred and ninety-seven accounts, one hundred of those have now been tagged with a notice to contact Water Resources within the next five days or face a water shut-off, which has been the protocol throughout this project. Staff, myself, we're looking for feedback from the board as to the possibility of assessing a non-compliance fee. Those accounts that have ignored these multiple notices, the fee would appear on the water bill as a separate line item. Resident would see the bill, see the new charge, and they would be encouraged to contact our water billing staff, who would give them the phone number for Water Resources. And once an appointment's made and confirmed, water billing would remove the non-compliant fee charge. It's my suggestion that this non-compliance fee be established at fifty dollars because the mayor wouldn't let me make it five thousand dollars. If the board agrees, we'd bring an ordinance back to you for first reading consideration at your December tenth board meeting. An alternative to the non-compliance fee would be what we're simply doing right now, and that's just proceeding with water shut-offs until such time as the appointment's made and confirmed. Obviously, you can see there are pros and cons to both of these options. So I am looking for the board to provide some guidance. While you're thinking about that, think about this other point. There's also another two hundred and seventeen accounts that have gone on record with Water Resources in the village, saying they are not comfortable with having outside personnel enter their residence due to the COVID nineteen concerns. So I look again to the board for your thoughts on, one, should these two hundred and seventeen accounts also be charged a non-compliance fee? And two, if they're not charged a fee, when or should they be charged?
Hmm, I've built a question. I have a question. Out of all the, let's see, the hundred and ninety-seven residents, is that also including the, out of the two hundred and seventeen residents? Or is that just on top of? So a hundred and ninety-seven residents haven't complied and two hundred and seventeen haven't wanted it done because of the COVID, correct?
It's a one, it's a one on top of the other, Trusty Light. Hundred and ninety-seven have ignored the notices, another two hundred and seventeen have said, I got the notice, but I want you, I don't want you coming into my house because I'm afraid of COVID.
And these are all residents? There's not businesses involved in this?
I only asked Water Resources to give me residential accounts.
Okay. Anyone, Chester, go ahead. Yeah, Bob, Bill, I'm in favor of the fifty-dollar fee. Not in favor of shutting the water off. Unless it's push comes to shove, you know, give them a couple of warning with the fifty-dollar penalty. And if they don't abide to that, then chances are we can probably shut the water off, but give them an opportunity. Are they, are all the houses actually filled with people? Or is there anybody in these houses? Or are they, are they vacant, maybe? I mean, owned by somebody but vacant?
I believe that there's another list, not of the one ninety-seven or the two seventeen of vacant accounts.
Okay.
I don't know.
Are any of them Section Eight?
You know, I don't have specific addresses, Trusty Pojack. I can get that information.
Well, on my, my thought is that I was gone for a month and I received two, when I came back, because my mail was held, I received two notices and a shut-off. But I wasn't here. So I mean, as soon as I came back, I called naturally, but maybe these people are out of town. Maybe, I don't know, maybe they're getting the notices too close together. I don't know. And then I don't want to charge the people that are afraid to have somebody in their house any money. Because those people are legitimately afraid and they're probably in their house.
If if I may, I would just like to to point out the ramifications of those that do not comply. One of the reasons that we undertook, one of many reasons, but one of the reasons we undertook this project was the ability to be able to read people's meters without having to go on the monthly tour of the village, where we go down every street in order to get water readings, which takes two employees about eight hours in a day. That's one of the reasons we did it amongst many, many others. That would still have to occur as long as we have even a handful of people that have not complied with getting the new meters. The other thing is, is when Water Resources is done with their project, when they've reached the end of their project, they will be done with their contract. And once they are, those that are left undone will have to be eventually done by our staff. Director Kaplan, I hope I've, I've addressed that properly, but so those are two ramifications of not having all of these accounts accomplished before Water Resources is done with their contract.
Well, what if you tell them to report their numbers? Excuse me, or they will be charged every single month their highest bill ever. Could you do that?
We do currently have several accounts that communicate their meter readings to us, either on the telephone or by email, or some of them even send pictures of the meter with the reading on it.
Oh, good, okay.
But we want to get them new meters.
Yeah.
Oh, I understand that. And the guys are very, they're safe, they're in a, a uniform, they have a mask on. I don't know if they have a shield, I don't remember. But, you know, and they seem to be here for only an hour. But if those people are legitimately afraid, what could we do?
You know, Bill, maybe we can, this is just a suggestion, have one of our CSOs go in the home with them. This way they maybe feel safer with an officer.
I think the, what's been represented is it's not that they're afraid of the person that's coming in. They're afraid of of catching the COVID virus because they have somebody else that's coming into their home.
Well, I'm sure they go out to stores and that too, Mike, you know, let's face it, you know, they're not in a shelter where they're, they're not in a bubble. They do go out, they have to. Right.
Answer for them, you don't know that.
No, but in general, I I kind of like the idea about the fifty-dollar fee, but that fee would be removed after they've complied. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes, sir. As soon as they have made the appointment and we can confirm the appointment, we would remove the fee. We wouldn't charge them.
Okay, and the fee would not would be just a reoccurring same amount on every bill, or is it escalate over, if they're skipping, we're talking two-bill cycles later? Or is it stay fifty?
It would be fifty, but of course, the way that the water billing system is designed after non-payment for a certain period of time, there is the, if it's not paid, now you would have the ten-dollar late payment charge. And then if it continues to be unpaid, then you add a percent and a half per month for each month that it's not paid. We're assuming the person would pay the bill and say, well, I'm still not gonna have my meter changed out.
Bill, out of the hundred and ninety-seven, are they, any of those past due bills? Or they just don't want nobody to come in?
Trusty Pojack, I don't have the details on the hundred and ninety-seven. I can get that information.
You know, I I can see problems, or I can see somebody not wanting somebody in the house with the the COVID. My brother-in-law and sister-in-law are that way. I can see making an arrangement with them to photograph the meter and send a reading to the the water department. But I also think that we are incurring costs in order to do that. And the special accommodations for these people should carry a penalty.
Right.
Five, five dollars a month, maybe. Just, you know, nothing significant, but still something to get them to realize that we're going out of our, our way for them. And, you know, i- it costs us money to do this for them.
We could charge them what we would pay our guys to put the meter in it.
That could get expensive, real expensive.
Well, maybe it'll change their minds.
Yeah, but the bottom line is, they don't want anybody in the house with the COVID nineteen, so.
Right.
Whether it's our guys or the, or the...
Well, once it's over with, we have to send our guys in there.
Well, once it's over with, that'll be another six months, I bet. We can't wait that long.
But I do think it's...
Mike, go ahead.
I do think it's important to remember that we're talking about two different groups of people.
Right.
A hundred and ninety-seven that we're, we're trying to get their attention essentially is a different group than the two hundred and seventeen that have said, you know, we really don't want anybody in during the pandemic.
Right.
So the the ones that we would be applying either a, a non-compliance fee or going out and turning off their water, whichever the board directs us to do, those would be the ones that we'd be looking to get their attention, not necessarily the ones that have told us we really don't want to have the contractor in.
But we really can't treat anybody differently, can we? I mean, they all have to be treated the same.
Why?
Well, because how many of the hundred and ninety-seven are gonna change over to the, I don't want them in because of COVID? I mean...
Once, once you've established the fact that you don't want them, that you've ignored these notices, then that takes away the COVID argument.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with you, Bill, on that. I give them one shot at fifty dollars. If they don't do it, then shut the water off. That'll really get them going.
That's a hundred and nineteen, correct? Or ninety-seven, whatever.
Correct.
Correct. I agree with that.
We're gonna assume that of the hundred and ninety-seven, as I said at the beginning, a hundred of those have already been tagged this week by Water Resources, and they had five days, the date the tag was put on, to make the appointment or face a shut-off. But we assume that they're all going to make appointments. So that would leave ninety-seven.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, what? Well, go ahead. I like that idea too, that fifty dollars and then shut the, like Chester was saying, shut the water off then.
Mike, let me go back into history here. Isn't one of the reasons that we are into the water replacement program was the IEPA is requiring us to reduce water loss by a specific percentage by the end of the year? Somewhere that's sticking in my mind.
Mike, can you touch on that?
Yes, sir. That is one of the reasons that we went and embarked on the water replacement, water meter replacement program was because of the water loss that we were experiencing through water meters, just not counting all of the water that's going through. So that was, it was one of the big reasons that we were doing this as well.
Okay, if we don't replace these meters, is there a penalty going to be levied on us for not replacing them?
Director Kaplan, if you could jump in here, I think one of the, the the permit would come into play with that, correct? Maybe she can't hear us. Yeah, I, I believe that we have to achieve a certain level of water loss, less than, I believe it has gone to 10%. And, and Director Kaplan will jump in when she, she gets back able to hear us. But I believe that it's, it's 10% that we have to remain under. So we have made a lot of improvement with what we're, where we're at. The main reason we need to get these completed is so that we can finish the project and make sure that the contractor who we've paid to do all of these meters actually does do all of the meters.
Mike, I have a quick question. This company service and change meters with other communities. What, what problems did they encounter and how did they solve it? Do you have any idea?
Again, I, I believe the way they were resolving that was to shut off water.
Oh, okay.
But.
That'll get their attention.
It, well, it definitely gets your attention. We were, we were looking at the, and, and the mayor brought this up earlier when I was discussing it with her, the fact that, you know, we are in the middle of a pandemic and there are quite a lot of financial hardships going on as well. So there is a charge to return on a person's water after it's been shut down. And so, you know, being able to do something to try and get their attention a little bit differently is what we were, we were thinking would be a, a good idea. And I know Director Kaplan from Public Works. She would like to see us turn the water off. So, because she feels that that is what gets the attention. And as you stated, Trustee PoJack, it, it does get a person's attention. We were hoping to, we were thinking of alternative ways to try and get someone's attention without necessarily shutting off the water.
Mayor, what do you think?
Oh, I think that I'd rather go with the fifty dollar fee. Right. But what I do think too is, I think, I believe Bill said that once they've called and made the appointment, that we'd take it up. I think we need to wait until the meter's been changed. Because it's easy to make an appointment and then cancel it. Yep. So.
I like that idea.
We had a lot of loss of water usage because the meters is they're what, 20 some years old? And they're running slow. I know when I got my new meter, the first bill was a little surprising. But now I'm getting billed for all the water that I'm using. So it's only fair. But no, I, I'd like to start with that. And then we still have to deal with it. Yes.
And then shut the water off then?
And I think we need to look at the circumstance.
Another question, a quick question I had is how much of this stuff, I mean, I mean, out of all those people, what about language barrier? I mean, are any of them, don't speak English, don't read English? Is it something that we've looked at too? I was just curious.
The top of the letter, Trustee Light, is a notification in Spanish that if the individual needs translation services, they call that number and Water Resources is set up in their central office to connect to a translation service and help them. Now, it's just Spanish. So possible there could be others.
Unfortunately, in the District 15, there's 48 languages spoken.
Right. That was just something to consider, that's all.
I just have one question. These people who are not paying their bills, are these the same people who weren't paying their bills before the virus? Or is it just that the, the virus has put them in, in a setback because they're out of work or something?
No, they've been paying their bills, Mary. They haven't wanted to get their water meter changed. That's the discussion that they were talking about.
They don't want to get their water meters changed?
Right.
You know, you see all these neighborhood bulletin boards and blogs talking about how much their water meter bills go up after their water meters are changed. And I can see people saying, hey, if I hold off for a couple of months, I'm going to save a bunch of money by not doing it.
I get it. So, I mean, not to close this thing out, is there any more discussion on this? I mean, is there, I mean, an agreeance on this of fifty dollars and then a shut off? Or that would be the direction we would go?
Trustee Light, I have one quick question. Out of all these homes, how many are vacant?
That was Mike.
Out of these 200, that was your question too?
Yeah, I asked that one earlier.
How many are actually vacant? Does anybody know?
Mike?
Bill?
Actually, I'm sorry. I screwed up. I screwed up my computer. The, the answer to that is there's another list. There's the 197 no-shows, there's the 217 COVID people, and then there's another list. They don't have a count of vacant properties. So we're not even talking about them.
So the 197 actually have people that have been there?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So are we looking for?
And water usage.
All right. Are we looking for direction, Mike, as, as far as just move it to the board?
If the board would like to do the fifty dollars, we'll bring legislation at the next board meeting that would allow us to be able to do that. We'll work on that. Have it to you with a request of wait first reading and then December 10th meeting.
All right. So we have to call it for a vote more or less then?
Um, Don.
You're muted, Don.
Still muted.
Can't hear you, Dan.
Sorry about that.
There you go.
Guys, I'm muted. Same, same methodology on the electric aggregation, a motion to move it to the board with a recommendation to concur. And we'll bring the ordinance as Michael said on the 10th.
All right. Bill?
Okay.
Move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, then we'll move that to the board with a recommendation to concur. Thank you, everybody. All we have left is adjournment. Sharon?
Sharon?
Oh, motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one. All right. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.